Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, December 5th. At 6:03 PM, this meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I would like to call to order, and request roll call, please.
Bolling?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Yeah.
Brett Howard?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
State?
Here, thank you. Item 3, the swearing in of Police Officer Alex Karatko. We will get to that when he gets here. He's en route. So, we'll hold off on that. We'll go right to number 4, which is from the November 10th Planning Commission Meeting. And I will turn it over to Trustee G. D. Carpenter, who is our Rep. on the Planning Commission. G.
Sure. So, this is a discussion and possible action regarding approval of the general development plan submitted by Spanree Property Group, also known as the Jefferson Crossing Project. This is for a multi-family residential development of multiple parcels described as follows. 123 1/2 South Main Street, two parcels, as well as 134, 144, 152, and 158 Jefferson Street, Village of Oregon. This is a note that the properties listed above were formerly owned by PLH and Associates. And my motion is that we waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 16-32.
I'll second that.
So, we heard from the property owner at our last meeting. I'm not sure if you guys have more questions, if we want another presentation. I guess I'd entertain what the board is looking for.
I'm fine.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Do you think we should do something for the public who's watching? Have we do like a two-minute? This is what we're doing?
Was it in The Observer?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, we're fine then.
Yeah, it's in front page.
Okay. Did you thank your staff on this?
Nope.
Okay. So, any further questions or discussion? Anything you're dying to say? Okay. So, we have the motion to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 16-32. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Short night for you guys.
And I might just add, so the public watching, so this, what we just did approves the vision and the rezoning of the district downtown, but these fellows will still be coming back to the Planning Commission for specific implementation plan, S.I.P. So, we'll be going through all the lighting and the parking again and all sorts of fun things.
Insight plan.
Yes. So, if the community wants to become engaged, remain engaged, it will still hold due. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Are we ready? Okay. Item 3 is swearing in of Police Officer Alex Karatko. And we'll do that right up here. Lieutenant Paganoff will address the audience and those on TV with a few comments.
Use the wireless.
The wireless. Set on, Dan.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're on.
Well, I was asked to step in for Chief Ull, much shorter and much younger, but...
I wish he knows that.
I know he's watching.
Also a different gender.
Yes, yes, that's true. Good evening. On behalf of the members of the Oregon Police Department, I would like to welcome you all to the oath of office ceremony for Alex Karatko. The mission of the Oregon Police Department is to safeguard the lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidents and fear of crime, and to enhance public safety while working with the diverse community to improve their quality of life. Our objective is to do so with honor and integrity, while at all times conducting ourselves with the highest ethical standards to maintain public trust and confidence. The men and women of the Oregon Police Department promote a safe environment through police and citizen interaction and by equitable enforcement of the laws of the Village of Oregon and the State of Wisconsin within the framework of the Constitution of the United States. The members of the Oregon Police Department are committed to working together as a team by being innovative, professional, and responsive to the public safety concerns of our citizens. We have created an organization staffed by highly motivated and dedicated and competent personnel, and we are pleased that Alex has accepted our offer to become a valued member of the team. A little bit about Alex. Alex currently lives in Stoughton and graduated high school at Stoughton High. He went to college at UW Oshkosh, where he earned a degree in criminal justice. While in college, Alex had the opportunity to play for the UW Oshkosh football team as a linebacker. Alex also was a community service officer for UW Oshkosh Police Department. Alex comes to us as a recent graduate of the Northeast Wisconsin Technical College Police Recruit Academy in Green Bay. It is with great honor and pride that we swear Alex in as the newest member of the Oregon Police Department. I would now ask the Village Board President, Steve Staton, to please step forward to formally deliver the official oath of office to Alex.
Can I jump you right up here, Alex? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Alex M. Karatko.
Aye, Alex M. Karatko.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the Charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the Charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of November 28, 2016.
I will assume my duties as of November 28, 2016.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good seeing you again.
Hey, good to meet you. Yep. This is my... I thought it was so quiet.
Jumps. The jumps, huh? Third quarter.
Bad boys.
Jump around.
No, I have no work. Thanks, Jenny. Jenny? I'm going to talk about what you said.
She said he's watching. He's on his list anyway.
Just remember, it's on TV, and there may be up to three or four people watching. It's a good night.
Yeah, it's exciting.
So, Alex, congratulations. Welcome aboard. You're joining a good department with real good leadership all the way through, a lot of good officers, so that's a good spot to get started. And like I said, there's obviously a lot of pride in you as a young man, so good for you. We're glad you've earned that.
Now, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you want to. You're welcome to.
It's going to get exciting, though.
The exciting stuff is done.
Steve, now, can I clear a room on?
Okay, that takes us to item 5, Village acquiring the former Methodist Church property. Item A, the purchase agreement. Summary of the main elements approved by Village Board on November 30, 2016.
And so, that's just FYI for people that read the packet. I do want to tell you that we are scheduled to close on this on Thursday, December 29th. So, thank you to Matt and to Jennifer, their attorney, for working to get that done.
Yeah, great. Good, thank you. Any questions? So, for people watching, this is online. You can see this in our packet. Go to the Village website and be all set with all...
And we also, yeah, we put on the website, it was on our Facebook page.
Yeah, that's right. I saw that on the, yeah, that's right, on the website, too. Okay. Item B, discussion possible action authorizing Village staff to hire K.D. Engineering to update the American Land Title Survey for an amount not to exceed $1,500 to $2,000.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion, please.
I still move.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you.
Just to...
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just to recap on this, when Sanctuary, the group doing the Sanctuary was working on this, they actually had commissioned K.D. Engineering to prepare an ALTA survey that was never completely finished, and that was only back in 2015. And so, when we were looking at it, looking at it being completed for this, we did contact K.D., since they were the original drafters of that. It's going to be cheapest to have them finish it, rather than it'd be $5,000 to $6,000 if we had, if we had to start up from square one with another firm or anything. So, I did request just a price from them, and they were saying it's in a $750 to $1,200 range, which is, you know, well within what we're asking for in that item B there.
Jeff, could you just describe what's an ALTA survey?
Oh, I knew someone was going to ask me that.
Or just say, just tell us what's in it.
American Land Title Survey. It actually, it shows property boundaries. It shows buildings. It shows any kind of easements. It'll sometimes, it usually show contours of the ground. It'll show any kind of encroachments, if something, if someone has a fence that's standing over the property. It's really just, when we're doing a land purchase like this, it's really getting a picture of what is out there, what's known, what may be a difficulty in the purchase. What we've seen on the preliminary ALTA survey is really a minor fence encroachment, which we've talked about before, as, you know, something that can either be handled down to later date and then a small landscaping retaining wall on the north side of the property. But other than that, it was pretty clean.
Okay. Anything else?
I have a question for Lisa. I believe for Lisa.
Yes.
Is there a, an account?
Present?
I'm here.
Is there an account that all the costs related to that parcel will be charged to?
It's all part of the TIF, so it'll all be part of the, it'll all be in one fund.
Okay. So, it'll be easy to retrieve in the future if we desire to do so. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, square motion and second to authorize Village staff to hire K.D. Engineering to update the American Land Title Survey for an amount not to exceed $1,500 to $2,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Item 6, public appearances, there are none listed. Item 7, approval of minutes, there are none listed. Item A, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of $473,234 for approval.
I'll move approval for discussion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a question on item vendor number 10928, or no, I'm sorry, 10919 Midwest Meter. Jeff, is this part of the change-out program? Are we still changing out old transponders with nuance?
That and new.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, we, yeah.
Okay.
These are just more, more transponders as we need, as more go out, we need more.
Right. And I guess my next question's going to be for Nikki. It's on number 12375, the B&amp;H photo. And the question is, the description is teen trailer book grant.
Yeah.
We have a teen trailer?
Well, this is something that, I think the last time there was something for the same purpose on here, you asked me about, so I was ready tonight for this question. So, in 2016, we received a grant from Beyond the Page, which funds humanities programs in Dane County through Madison Community Foundation and the National Endowment for the Humanities. So, the Teen Book Trailer Contest is the name of that grant that we received. And so, with that, we did a number of things. We collected, made an iPad movie kit, so that has a number of iPads and stop-motion animation apps on it, other things that go with that. And then, made it so that there were different workshops around the county. It was actually even on News 3, the Teen Book Trailer Contest. And so, that wrapped up this year. This was the last, I believe, the last or one of the very last purchases towards that. It included a, I think, three iPads, a green screen, and some photo stations. And then, the exciting thing is that also today, we learned that we got a continuation, another grant to use those resources again this next year. Kelly Allen, our youth services librarian, received that grant for a total of $1,600. So, you'll see some more purchases like this, probably with a slightly different name. I think this one's going to be Stories in Motion. So, when you see that, that's what that's about. So, we'll have some more exciting teen and tween programming that brings humanities and technology together.
Thank you.
Any other questions on vouchers?
I had a question regarding vendor 6400, the Oregon School District, that we reimburse them for $11,000. Just curious to know, maybe we've already discussed this, but I don't remember the details.
That's for the annual rec program we pay, Doug?
Okay.
That's in the budget.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, we have vouchers tonight to approve in the amount of $473,234. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. That's approved.
Can we go to item 11?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So, we're going to go to item number 11. We have people here for that that have to leave, at least one person, I know. So, 11 is communication miscellaneous business aid, discussion possible action regarding downtown dumpster license agreement. There's a note that says the following are current users of the dumpster corral. Not all are listed in the current agreement. We request the board to discuss adding all users to the agreement. Village Attorney Dregney will recommend the board include new language dealing with the relocation of the dumpster corral as a result of the Jefferson Crossing redevelopment project. So, those currently paying to use the corral are noted with asterisks. Those are Main Tap, Charlie's on Main, there's one above unit, 115 South Main, McWilliams on 107 South Main, and Holstein Kitchen 101 South Main. Others listed are Ziggy's and 3 Above Units, 107 South Main, and Chocolate Caper 105 South Main. So, Dan, I know you wanted to address the boards, why don't you go ahead and come up and do that, since you have to leave, and we'll go from there.
Oh, well.
Got to get there first.
Dan Donahue, 248 Bravie Street in Oregon. So, our, the only concern we had with this was around how it would be managed for renters versus, especially for residential renters versus commercial renters. So, if, you know, are all the businesses going to sign? Are all the businesses and the tenants of each of the residential properties going to sign? Is it only a part, and how is that divided up? And then, I did have one question that I think Mike cleared up perfectly, which was about, you know, what if we got evicted and we are on this lease, we're still on that lease for a year, but we're no longer occupying the building? But he said that since it's a monthly, it's an annual fee.
It's an annual fee, yeah.
And it would be an annual license, that's not an issue. So, we're more, I'm talking to Bonnie and Jerry, too. I mean, we're more just curious about where this came from, because we saw it on the agenda and didn't know anything. So, we're more here to understand what's being discussed and then...
Sorry. So, it came, it came when we observed Ziggy's using the dumpster area, so obviously they needed to be put onto the license. And then, that brought up the issue. Well, then, there's obviously your commercial user, and then, you know, you're in theory not paying for it, and then you have these units that are above, the businesses not paying. So, we're bringing this to the board to decide if you want to start charging the, you know, who you want to charge for the use of the corral. And then, the other issue is more of just a technical issue in the license agreement that Matt just wants to make it clear that we're going to have to move the, I mean, I'm not saying we're removing, we're going to have to move the dumpster corral next year as part of this Jefferson Crossing project, and that would just be put into the agreement.
Could I just say a couple things?
Yeah, all right, ahead, Matt.
The way the agreement was drafted previously, and the way it's still kind of structured, and I think we need to address this, is that we basically had four parties that were parties to the agreement, the Fields, McWilliams, De Bru, and Kevin Ace. And the agreement said that those licensees and then any of their residential tenants had a right to use the dumpster corral. And so, things have changed, obviously, over there since that time, and the list of kind of players seems to have been changed to some extent. And so, the list that I have now is Ziggy's, Main Tap, Charlie's on Main. There's a single residential unit, as I understand it, above Charlie's on Main, McWilliams, and three residential units above McWilliams.
Only, there's only two occupied, available units.
Two, only two available?
Right. There is another space where something could go eventually, but it's not...
Currently vacant?
Right.
Okay. So, there's three units, two of which are currently occupied, okay. And then, Chocolate Caper, are you, are you a tenant or are you an...
We are a tenant of Scott McWilliams.
You're a McWilliams tenant?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we have Holstein now, and then, as I understand it, there's four units above Holstein's?
That's what we checked with the poll stop.
No.
No? What do we got above Holstein?
There's two residential.
Okay.
Yeah, single occupancy and one office.
Two residential and one office.
And above Charlie's, you had that as one. There are two apartments above there.
So, there's two apartments above Charlie's?
Right. So, as a license, as a, as a user on the agreement of Field Properties, it was our understanding that addressed our residential.
The way it was structured, yes.
Yeah.
The way it was, yeah.
Absolutely.
The way it was. So, I think, so I think it's a good time to kind of regroup on this and decide whether any adjustments should be made. We certainly have a kind of a longer list, as I see it, and I just want to talk about the money, too. I mean, what we, what we had previously under the, under the agreement last year or this year, we had those four users identified, four licensees identified, but those licensees and any of their tenants had a right to use the agreement, and each licensee paid $130. So, the village was collecting $520. So, I think that the issue to discuss now is, before I can finalize this, is who should be, who should we list as a party to the agreement? Should we make any, clearly, some changes have to be made. You know, De Bru doesn't make any sense anymore.
It wasn't on last year.
Yeah. Matt, Holstein's on that.
Holstein was.
Holstein's on the current.
Oh, so, okay.
It was Holstein's, Charlie's...
Yep.
Main Tap.
And Scott.
Well, somehow, I still had Greg De Bru on here.
Yeah, I know, I caught that.
So, I got to change that. All right.
That's an easy one.
So, one way to do it would be to kind of stay with the, well, we're going to list the, essentially, the building owners, building owner slash landlords. That's kind of what we did before. We didn't, we just stayed with, and I don't know if they're all owners, really. I mean, we had the Fields...
Holstein's is a tenant.
They're a tenant now of the Fields.
Charlie's is a tenant.
Charlie, yeah, so if we, we can't really do that.
Ziggy's is a tenant. Ziggy's is a tenant.
We're a tenant.
Yeah, so, and they're all tenants of the Fields.
No.
We're a tenant of McWilliams.
You're a tenant of McWilliams. Okay. So, I think we need to figure out who the parties are and who's paying what. That's, that's...
What's on second?
Yeah, exactly. And so...
And what you just said was the other thing I wanted to make sure got brought up was, and this might not affect this agreement, this might more affect the emptying agreement, is the differential use. Obviously, we use more of the trash than are the residential tenant above us and less than a restaurant.
Definitely correct. So, let me ask this for the folks who are here, that the list that we just went through, you know, Ziggy's, Main Tap, the residential units, are those people all currently users of the dumpster corral?
Yes.
Yes.
And did I leave anyone off who should be on the list? Is there any user that's not on that list?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, Ziggy's, Main Tap, Charlie's, and Holstein's...
Well, I'm sorry, Burgie Jewelry?
No, they don't use it.
Oh, they don't use it.
And they're just peaceful, hard.
They're not on the list?
They're not on the list.
Okay. So, we've got Ziggy's, Main Tap, Charlie's on Main, and Holstein, those are all kind of restaurant slash bar users. Chocolate Caper, would you put yourself in the same category as those as far as use?
I'd say retail.
Okay. So, we've got restaurants, and then, and retail is a separate category? And then, we've got the residential and office users. Are those pretty much comparable in terms of amount of use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Minimal.
Restaurant, retail, and then residential and office. And so, we've got like three categories of user. They're obviously using it to a greater or lesser extent. I think the restaurants use it the most heavily, the retail kind of in the middle there, maybe?
Yeah.
And then, the residential and office the least. As I say, but what we were doing before was, all we did was we collected $130 from each of four kind of main players, and then that entitled not only them, but their tenants. And we weren't collecting anything associated specifically with tenants and so on.
Really quick.
Yeah.
Can you please remind us what we were collecting the money for?
Yes, so, this goes, the concept originally was that the village spent the money to build this dumpster corral in the parking lot, in the municipal parking lot.
About $15,000.
Okay, we spent about $15,000 to build this thing. And the, and the hope was, well, the reason to pay, collect the fee was, the hope was that, you know, we could recover those costs. But the fee that we ended up collecting was, was about $520 a year. So, we're never going to recover that, and now we're going to build a new one and spend another $15,000 building a new dumpster corral.
Oh, we got the fence at least. Maybe, maybe the fence, maybe, yeah. Maybe, maybe.
So, then, in terms of, you know, collecting enough to pay for the corral, we're definitely not in that, we weren't in that neighborhood before.
Well, and again, if it's okay, I'd just like to feather things in, because it helps me to think through it. If we move the dumpster corral, that would be part of a developer agreement.
We will be negotiating, that'll be one element of the agreement, yep.
Right.
And it'll be part of a bigger project.
Right.
It'll be a very tiny piece of a much bigger project. There will still be a cost.
But it's on the table.
It has to be addressed.
Right.
Yeah.
So, what we're really talking about is the likelihood that this dumpster corral is, is going to be gone as contingent upon this project...
the money too. I mean, what we, what we had previously under the, under the agreement last year or this year, we had those four users identified, four licensees identified, but those licensees and any of their tenants had a right to use the agreement. And each licensee paid $130. So the village was collecting $520. So, I think that the issue to discuss now is, before I can finalize this, is who should be, who should we list as a party to the agreement? Should we make any, clearly some changes have to be made. You know, De Bru doesn't make any sense anymore.
It wasn't on last year.
Yeah, Matt, Holstein's on, Holstein's on the current.
Oh, so, okay.
It was Holstein's, Charlie's.
Yep.
Main Tap.
And Scott.
Well somehow I still had Greg De Bru on here.
Yeah, I know, I caught that.
So, I got to change that.
Yeah, that's an easy one.
So, one way to do it would be to kind of stay with the, well, we're going to list the, essentially the building owners, building owner slash landlords. That's kind of what we did before. We didn't, we just stayed with, and I don't know if they're all owners, really. I mean, we had the Fields.
Holstein's is the tenant.
They're a tenant now of the Fields.
Charlie's is a tenant.
Charlie, yeah, so if we, we can't really do that.
Ziggy's is a tenant.
You're a tenant.
We're a tenant.
Yeah, so, and they're all tenants of the Fields, is that right?
No.
We're a tenant of McWilliams.
You're a tenant of McWilliams. Okay. So, I think we need to figure out who the parties are and who's paying what.
Right, well, and that's...
What's on second?
Yeah, exactly. And so...
And what you just said was the other thing I wanted to make sure got brought up was, and I, and this might not affect this agreement, this might more affect the emptying agreement, is the differential use. Obviously, we use more of the trash than are the residential tenant above us and less than a restaurant.
Definitely correct. So, let me ask this for the folks who are here, the, the list that we just went through, you know, Ziggy's Main Tap, the residential units, are those people all currently users of the dumpster corral?
Yes, yes.
And, and did I leave anyone off who should be on the list? Is there any user that's not on that list?
I don't think so.
Okay. So Ziggy's, Main Tap, Charlie's, and Holstein's...
Well, I'm sorry, Burgie Jewelry?
No, they don't use it.
Oh, they don't use it.
And they're just peaceful hearts.
They're not on the list?
They're not on the list.
Okay. So we've got Ziggy's, Main Tap, Charlie's on Main, and Holstein, those are all kind of restaurant slash bar users. Chocolate Caper, would you put yourself in the same category as those as far as use?
I'd say retail.
Okay, so we got restaurants slash, and then, and retail is a separate category? And then we've got the residential and office users. Are those pretty much comparable in terms of amount of use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Minimal.
Restaurant, retail, and then residential and office. And so, we've got like three categories of user, they're obviously using it to a greater or lesser extent. I think the restaurants use it the most heavily, the retail kind of in the middle there, maybe?
Yeah.
And then the residential and office the least. As I say, but what we were doing before was, all we did was we collected $130 from each of four kind of main players, and then that entitled not only them, but their tenants. And we weren't collecting anything associated specifically with tenants and so on.
Really quick.
Yeah.
Can you please remind us what we were collecting the money for?
Yes, so this goes, the, the concept originally was that the village spent the money to build this dumpster corral in the parking lot, in the municipal parking lot.
About, about $15,000.
Okay, we spent about $15,000 to build this thing. And the, and the hope was, well, the reason to pay, collect the fee was, the hope was that, you know, we could recover those costs. But the fee that we ended up collecting was, well, was about $520 a year, so we're never going to recover that, and now we're going to build a new one and spend another $15,000 building a new dumpster corral.
Oh, we, we got the fence at least, maybe, maybe the fence, maybe, yeah. Maybe, maybe.
So then, in terms of, you know, collecting enough to pay for the corral, we're definitely not in that, we weren't in that neighborhood before.
Well, and again, if it's okay, I'd just like to feather things in because it helps me to, to think through it. If we move the dumpster corral, that would be part of a developer agreement.
We will be negotiating, that'll be one element of the agreement with, yep, and it'll be part of a bigger project.
Right.
It'll be a very tiny piece of a much bigger project. There will still be a cost.
But it's on the table.
It has to be addressed.
Right.
Yeah.
So what we're really talking about is the likelihood that this dumpster corral is, is going to be gone as contingent upon this project going through and, and that, and that we're never going to recover the $15,000 regardless of whether we charge $520 per year, or even at this point, we could probably charge $4,000 per year and probably still not recover the cost of the original dumpster corral.
Well, I mean, if we were getting $4,000 a year, we could recover the cost of the original $15,000 one in a few years, yeah.
Yeah, but in a few years, we might be moving it.
Yeah, and we might be moving it, and then we'd be building a new one, right?
So what I heard you say was originally the, the reason that this issue was raised was because it was observed that Ziggy's was using the dumpster corral.
Well, I think it was, that was part of it, but there was a recognition that, that the list of players has changed.
Well, and again, just for my own clarification, the landlords haven't changed, it's the names of the tenants that have changed. And the original agreement was, was that the landlords would pay for the use of the dumpster corral and that their tenants would be allowed to use it. And perhaps it wasn't considered that Ziggy's is actually a tenant of the Fields.
Well, that property wasn't even part of the mix when we did this agreement earlier.
Right, but it, but as far as knowing that they're a tenant and looking at the original language in the original contract, if, now that we know that they're a tenant, we know that they're using it in, in alignment with the original contract.
You mean Ziggy's?
Right.
Yeah, Ziggy's, I think, has a right to use it because they are a tenant of one of the licensees. And that's one of the reasons I think we might want to think about restructuring this because the way we've got it structured now, any one of these licensees, they have a right to use it for any, well, except actually it's limited to their residential tenants. And Ziggy's is not a residential tenant. So actually Ziggy's would not have a right to use it under the agreement as drafted. Except that it's their business. Ziggy's is not, well, I don't know whose business is Ziggy's. Is Ziggy's your business or somebody else's?
The business is separate from the building.
But who's, well, right, the party is...
So we've gone, we, we have through this meeting after meeting, and this is, this is what I call my early Christmas present because it comes up every December. We won, we were going to at one point try to cover what we spent on building the dumpster and that, that board that was there at that time said no, and we kind of decided this. The reason why this is coming up is because I personally observed, it's not a big deal, Ziggy's using the dumpster, and I thought, and I thought, well, we're going to have to deal with that because they're a new user of the dumpster area, and they're obviously a, they're a heavier user than a, if it was an office building. So that's what kind of brought this forward. So then when I brought that forward, somebody said, no offense, what about the Chocolate Caper? They're a commercial tenant user, why aren't they not paying additionally as well? So that's why it's in front of you tonight.
Yeah, so the original agreement was between us and the landlords?
No, no, the original, it's, it's between whoever on the lease. It's, it's, it's the Fields, Scott McWilliams, it was Greg De Bru, now it's Holstein's and, and Main Tap.
And do not assume that original agreement made any sense.
Is Holstein's, is Holstein's currently on the, on the contract?
Correct. Yep, yep.
Can this go down to a committee somewhere? Because I could see this conversation taking up a good portion of the board meeting.
Well, it, it had, well, it had been to a committee last year when I, when I brought it forward to the board, the board didn't want to make any changes to it, so I, I threw it on this agenda.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to not make any changes to it, other than to clean it up and make it make sense.
Those are changes.
Yeah.
Well, well, what I'm saying is that there's some administrative changes because certain, because certain businesses no longer occupy space and other businesses do, but the businesses that do are tenants of McWilliams and tenants of the Fields.
So, so Jeff, are you saying that Ziggy's can use the dumpster area as part of the fee that the Fields are paying for?
Right.
With no additional?
Right.
Okay.
And that Chocolate Caper can use it as, as regards being tenant of McWilliams?
But that isn't really consistent, though, then why is Holstein's, Holstein's has a fee, Charlie's has a fee, Field Properties has a fee?
They're all tenants of, right?
Right, but we're already, so we're paying a fee.
I, I don't think it makes sense to do it that way anymore, personally.
And, and Matt, just as a point of clarification too, you said that, you know, the residential tenants were not paying, but they are through, because we are using.
Right, they weren't called out separately in the agreement.
They weren't, no, but Field Properties was paying, so we were paying a fee, Charlie's paying a fee, Holstein's paying a fee, and then Ziggy's open mid-year, so...
I mean, if you want to, I, I get what you're saying about this taking up a lot of the board's time.
Yeah.
We could certainly meet as business owners, if the board gave us some direction in terms of what the fee is going to be and some things like that, I mean, I would be open. I'm not, I'm speaking only for myself, I don't want to suggest I'm speaking out of any...
I have an idea along those lines, just to throw out, to see if, you know, one thought I have was to just try and rationalize the numbers a little bit, and, and before it was like $130 per, but, but my thought was, why don't we assign those to, you know, so Ziggy's is $130, Main Tap is $130, Charlie's is $130, and then come up with a number for the residential's. And I was thinking like 20 bucks for the residential units, and then something in between for Chocolate Caper, and then, or something like that, and then add those up, that came up to $810. That would be one way to do it. The other way to do it is the board could say, well, you guys just got to come up with X dollars per year, you can divide it up however you want.
As a group, you mean?
As a group. And what we were at was 520.
Yeah, that's true.
If you want to just say, hey, we don't care as long as we're getting 520, or if you want to say, no, we think we should get 800 or whatever, say, you guys tell us how you want us to divide it and bring us a list and a dollar and we can, that's another idea.
But that, that assumes, though, that everybody's going to come to the table and take their fair share.
Correct.
Which puts us right back in the middle of a conversation.
And the challenge we've had in the past is when we've said, you guys go figure it out and bring it back.
It didn't work out.
We, it, it didn't work out so well.
I can see that from here, though.
Yeah. So that's why I was going to suggest we just say...
It took six months the last time, it was, and that's why I brought it forward last year. The board was worn out over it, the board said, just sign it, have them sign it.
So I'd suggest that we send it back, the owners at 520, they come up the plan, if we don't agree, we'll come up with our own plan, it's done.
I'll second that motion.
Can you spare that motion for second? Reaction from owners?
520 totally, you mean?
That's what you said it was, right?
That's what we have been collecting.
I mean, I, I'd like it if...
That's a deal.
If it covered the commercial tenants too, just so, you know...
You can cover whoever you want.
Whoever you want.
Yeah, make it work.
We just need you 520 bucks.
Make it work. Get it done, come back one time, it's okay, and you go away on dumpsters because we don't want to see anything on dumpsters again. We talked about this way too long, way too much the last time, and we're getting there real fast.
We just need to know who, who are we, who's signing up to, who gets to use it and who's paying what? Who's paying the 520? Who gets to use it and who's paying?
All right.
Does that work, Bonnie?
Sure.
Okay.
Come back to the next board meeting, please, December 19th?
I won't be here, but...
I won't be here either.
That makes it easier for us.
Well, I mean, it, it's not, if the board's okay with it expiring is, you know, there's an element of trust here, that we end up signing it in January, is that a big deal?
Just, just handle it.
So, Bonnie, you're coming here on January 9th anyways for that meeting, so let's, can do it, can do it at that meeting?
Okay, January 9th?
Yep, yeah. Good way to start the year off.
Yeah, with caution about...
The dumpster word, yes, okay.
And just on the question of the relocation, the agreement, I've added a paragraph to make it clear that we may need to relocate that within the village municipal parking lot if this new project happens. This agreement doesn't decide where it'll be relocated, all it says is that we reserve the right to move it if we need to move it. And the question of exactly how that will happen, I think, is going to be resolved during the SIP review of the Jefferson Crossing project. That'll be part of the rezoning review, or the SIP review.
And I'd like to really encourage staff to make that part of the negotiation with the developers so that we don't have ongoing maintenance and management...
Of the dumpster?
Of the dumpster corral, yeah.
We, we want...
I think that that first experiment did mostly what it was supposed to do, but it created more problems than it solved, perhaps, and that if we just make the new dumpster corral part of the negotiation with the developer of the redevelopment of the existing site, then we don't have to deal with the cost of the village.
I think this dumpster is going to be, it's continue to be a village-owned dumpster corral.
We won't have to have the conversation about recovering the expense.
Their dumpster is going to be inside their building, Jeff. They're, they're not going to use this dumpster.
Yeah, they're not involved.
It's not for them.
Yeah.
Life goes on with this dumpster, it'll just be someplace else. Look, relocate it or something.
Yeah, but the, but it won't, it won't necessarily be on village property as a result of the negotiations that we have with the developers. So what I'm saying is that the developer wants to negotiate that this dumpster corral get moved because they want to do something with that parcel, that staff makes best efforts to, to make the relocation of the dumpster corral part of the negotiation with the developer.
I don't understand what you mean by that. We know it's going to have to move if their project moves forward as outlined in the GDP.
And why is that?
Because of the configuration of the, eh, drive access into the parking lot.
And if it moves forward as it's outlined, whose property is it sitting on?
It'll be, it'll ultimately be on village property.
Yeah, it'll be on our property, not theirs.
We think.
So we'll control it.
Now, if you want us to negotiate a deal where it's on their property, that's way more trouble than it's worth, personally.
No, no, I, I believe in my mind that when their plan goes through, it winds up on their property.
You think the dumpster is going to end up on...
In my mind, that's what I have in picture.
That's what you'd like to see?
No, no.
Yeah.
I think when I, in my mind, when I think of the development and the parking surfaces that the developer's proposing, that the dumpster corral winds up on their, on their lot, you know?
It'll be on ours.
The G, eh, the GDP map of the parking lot shows it, and it's on village property right now.
But that's a proposed, that is...
As, as proposed.
There might be a change in the SIP process, having sat through the meetings, I don't know what's going to happen, my sense is it's probably going to have to move, but we don't know for sure.
Yeah, so my best effort's...
The bottom line, it'll be on our property.
I would think so.
But we're not, the, the, in my view, the location of that dumpster corral should not be the thing that drives the design and location of the building. I mean, that would be the tail wagging the dog.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is that while these negotiations are ongoing, if it comes up that the dumpster corral needs to be moved so that the developer can develop the property as they need it to be developed, that we make our best efforts to include the relocation of the dumpster corral in the negotiations with the developer. That's all. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But if it needs to be moved and we can, and we can have the developer move it for us, everybody wins.
So they're incurring the expense.
So they're incurring the expense.
Well, it, it's going to be part of the, the financial discussion, which is a tough discussion, so...
Which would be, which would actually be on next, next board meeting, we're going to have an initial discussion about it, so...
Yeah, we can't keep it there.
Typically, when I make the same point three times, Genies have made me aware, it's not because people haven't heard me, it's because they don't agree. So I'm just going to table that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You wore her out, Jeff.
Please.
Okay, so back to our...
Where's your card?
Our motion second is that this goes back to the owners to come up with a plan, bring back to us January 9th.
Yep.
The amount is $520, you decide how to split it up. If we don't like it, don't agree, we'll do it ourselves and you'll have to live with it. Here and simple, okay?
The longer your attorney talks, the more it's going to cost.
Yeah, okay.
At the January?
We're going to, we'll bring the plan through to January 9th.
Yeah, they'll come back January 9th. So, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion curious, okay?
They're just coming back.
Thank you for moving that.
Yeah, you're welcome, Dan, glad we could accommodate you. We even got you done. Okay, so now we are on item B, discussion possible, asked about sidewalks, no removal for village buildings for 2016-17.
Do you want to go back?
We have used nine.
Sorry, that's right.
That's okay.
I forgot all about that.
That's okay.
Turn the page over. And we are at item nine, community input, where people have a chance to address the board, we allow 15 minutes, each speaker has three. Does anyone wish to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we will go on to item 10, proclamations and announcements, any board comments?
I would just say the, the lighting of the tree on Friday night was a big, big hit, and a lot of people came over to have chili at the fire station, and a lot of people came to, or the kids came to see Santa, it was a very nice evening.
Yeah, I, I was down here Friday night and the town was full, there were people all over, so thanks to Chamber and others for making that work, well, appreciate it.
And the lights looked gorgeous.
I heard several comments on that earlier, and everyone I heard, I told them you were in charge.
Yeah. Just a comment about the fire department, in the last few months, we've sworn in a couple of new firefighters. We don't do that publicly at the board meetings currently, but it is a ceremony, it's a, and it's a neat ceremony to see these new firefighters coming onboard and their energy and their enthusiasm.
Good. Anything else? Okay, I would say, just for clarification, I wouldn't normally say this, but the observer, they got it, they stated it right, but they actually had it wrong based on what I told them. I will be running for reelection in the general election.
What did you say?
I will be running for reelection, so... The observer had that right, but I told him I was undecided at that time. They, that's what they wrote, they had it wrong based on what I told them, I have no idea how that happened, but it did, so I want to be sure that was clarified because people have been asking. Any other board comments? Okay. Staff comments, Mr. Grace, upcoming meetings?
So as we get ready for tax collection season, we're going to skip a Monday night meeting next week, so we're going to have a packet to do, if that's okay with Chair of the Finance Committee?
Have we had a finance meeting this year?
We have, one or two.
One, maybe two.
Then we want, why in the... Then we want, why, why in the year?
Why would you miss it? That's a good point. Eh, next board meeting is the nineteenth at five. Eh, no night meetings on the twenty-sixth, and then, eh, no, no board meeting on, on January second, and as we were just discussing, the first meeting in January, in, eh, two thousand seventeen would be on January ninth.
Okay, so if I understood you, Mike, we, we still have a board meeting next week, right?
Yeah, on, on the nineteenth. No, you have, you have off.
Two, two weeks away.
Yeah, next Monday night, you have off.
Okay. I won't turn that down.
I'll call you, remind you, Jerry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Next is leaf collection update, Mr. Rao?
Well, eh, we were collecting up to last Friday, and, eh, weather does permit us to be out for another pass. We, we actually almost made it through the entire village completely, eh, with the last go-around, I think, up in the Autumn Woods, eh, or specifically in front of my house. They did not get to there yet. But I, I exercised my option to go and pick them up myself and take them down to the leaf pile, so that can be done for residents as well. But, eh, we'll actually be out. Typically, what we'll do is if we miss a few areas, we'll be out first in the spring and take care of them at that time as well.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, I saw those guys out in the rain picking up leaves, so they give their best shot, I'll tell you that.
Oh, absolutely.
Election recount, anything on that, Candy?
Um, the village held their, held their recount on Friday, and everything went quite smoothly at the city county building. Um, the village was able to complete all of three of our polling places in a couple hours, so we were out of there at like eleven-thirty.
P M.
And P M, yeah. Um, and so Peggy and I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to the village hall staff, and especially our poll workers for their hard work for this, what, eh, what seems like never-ending election, but, so, we couldn't do it without them, so we really appreciate them, so.
Thank you. Then there's a note that village hall be closed on Friday, December twenty-third, Monday, December twenty-sixth, and Monday, January second, two thousand seventeen. Now we're on to sidewalks, right?
Yeah, sidewalk, yeah.
So, item eleven B, discussion possible action regarding sidewalks, snow removal from village buildings for two thousand sixteen seventeen season. Eh, the recommended motion is to approve the proposal from Timberland Landscape dated November twenty-one, two thousand sixteen, for sidewalk shoveling and salting at the village hall, senior center, library, and police department for the two thousand sixteen seventeen snow removal season. So do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff, quick explanation, please?
Yeah, just a real quick recap. Obviously, um, we, we, in the past, we've had our custodial staff, as well as, eh, when time permits, public works employees handle, eh, snow shoveling around the four buildings mentioned. Um, we are down one custodial staff, and then we're going to be down a second one when one enters on a, a family leave, eh, issue later on this, this month. So, um, we could handle it with public works, however, that would be pulling them off of their regular plow routes and, and everything, and it would take much longer to get things done in the village. So we've looked into having a, a private company come in and take care of the sidewalk shoveling. Eh, we feel then it can make it as a priority. Our buildings get opened earlier, and there's a safety issue. You see, I have a comparison in there of, of kind of the cost associated with whether we would be using internal staff or hiring a service. It is a little more expensive to hire as a service, but, um, we're hoping that, eh, that gets, you know, we can rely on the service to take care of the sidewalks and allowing our staff to be taking care of the, the streets and roadways, as well as the rest of the downtown sidewalks and everything. I did solicit, eh, up to five, eh, different vendors, and obviously, this late in the season, um, they're a little overbooked right now, as well as somewhere honest, and just said they can't add it to their schedule. But, eh, Timberland is a local company and has actually shown, um, good interest in, in doing this for us. Eh, we were not able to get them on for, eh, yesterday, but, eh, we got things cleared, and, eh, hopefully, if they get approved, they're ready to go right away.
Any questions? Jeff?
So, um, when you say you're down one, and then down a second one, can you be more specific about what you mean?
Well, we had two custodial, full-time custodial staff. Eh, the one, eh, resigned back, eh, about a month ago, and so that, eh, we're down to one. Um, and then, eh, the other individual is, eh, I won't go into any details, but is going out on a, a, a family leave and, eh, for approximately six weeks, starting in December nineteenth.
So, one recommendation is, when you think about the cost of doing something, I appreciate how you break it down and make it simple to understand, is there's a soft cost when an employee is going to be paid to not be here?
Correct.
That gets added into the equation. Um, so, so just in terms of the whole picture, you know, any portion of that F M L A that's paid, whether it's vacation time or sick time, is a cost to the village?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, then the second comment I'd like to make is, you know, there's something to be said for quality of life, too, and just because I can work overtime doesn't mean that I want to. Eh, but then there's a flip side of that, eh, which means sometimes working overtime is an opportunity for me to make more money for my family, and, and that might be welcomed by me. So I think there's a couple of quality of life issues on both sides of that equation that don't necessarily make it into the math, but they're important.
Sure.
Um, my next comment is regards to Mike.
Mm-huh.
We've talked a lot about not using operational expenses, or not using our general fund to fund operational expenses, and how that factors into our bond rating.
Cap. Um, I gotta think about what you're saying there. We, we don't use fund balance, general fund fund balance, to fund operations.
Right.
Right.
So I would just-
Did you balance the budget from year to year?
Yeah, so I would just kind of yellow-light this, not to say that I'm concerned, because I'm not, but when you, when you start having employees that are paid to not be here, and then you go outside and you, and you contract to do the work that they would do if they were here, I think that you're kind of rubbing up against a yellow line, and I'm just going to put that note out there as an observation.
Right.
And then my last comment is, when you go out and solicit multiple vendors, I'd like to see who they are, even if they don't reply. Um, I'd like to see it be a matter of record. I think from a transparency perspective, it's important that we are taking three, four bids on these jobs, and that we're not making our decision based on who's the least expensive necessarily, but some combination of cost and quality. And we've talked about that before with regards to the roads and what we found, the police department, the insulation, the fire department, and the heating, air conditioning, et cetera.
Sure.
Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? So we motion second to approve the proposal from Timberland Landscape for sidewalk shoveling and salting at village hall, senior center, library, and police department for the snow removal season. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, discussion possible action, resolution number sixteen dash thirty-four, the two thousand seventeen annual fee resolution, and the recommended motion is to adopt that resolution. So we need that motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And, and Steve, there was a new one, updated one in the, in your Plastia folder?
Yeah.
Okay, included the library change.
Yeah, that was in the folder that we got.
Yeah, okay.
Jeff?
Um, so I noticed on refuse recycling, page five, there's an eleven dollar and fifty cent per household refuse recycling fee. It was not in the packet that you handed out, but it was in the packet that I received electronically. Can you talk about that fee a little bit? Is that a fee that we've charged in the past?
That's, that's-
Standard.
That's paltry. That's what you pay every, every month for your garbage pickup.
That's the, that's the curbside pickup.
Yeah.
It's on the municipal services bill you receive monthly.
So it's part of the, is that part of the water bill?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that fee is the same, or has it changed?
It, it went down forty cents.
Okay.
Anything else on this? So we have a motion and second to adopt resolution number sixteen dash thirty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, discussion possible action, resolution number sixteen dash thirty-six, the two thousand seventeen salary schedule effective one-one-seventeen for non-represented employees, and the recommended motion is to adopt resolution sixteen dash thirty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
And we will, there was a typo in the first, whereas, that twenty sixteen should be twenty seventeen, so we're, we'll correct that before you sign it, Steve, if it gets approved.
I can pick it up, update it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. This is what we talked about a month ago, right?
Well, this, this is the annual adjustment that we give to the employees, non, non, reps.
Yeah.
It's not the police union. And then the library board has to act on something for their employees as well.
Okay. So any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, review of two thousand sixteen estimated tax bill?
I guess I will. So, as, um, this is the estimated tax bill. We have not, um, been contacted by the county yet to see. We've submitted all of our information, then they have to process it, but they have not contacted us yet to let us know that we can go and pick our information up. But, but just, um, by plugging in the numbers, all the way on the right-hand side column, it says tax levies for two thousand sixteen. Those are numbers that we receive from all the taxing jurisdictions. So basically, what it boils down to, the, um, the value on the average home, from fifteen to sixteen, the value themselves went up, and, um, if you're looking at the difference between what somebody would pay on the same home in fifteen to what they would pay in two thousand sixteen, the difference, the net difference is the two hundred and six dollars and ninety-seven cent increase, that's basically right in the middle of your page. So I guess I don't know what other information. Does anybody have any questions about it, or?
So, so when people ask you, or you, you talk about it, I always talk about, you know, village purpose taxes, so when you look at the, the first value, as, as you know, our tax, taxes went up fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents. That's one thing, eh, people, you know, maybe ask you that, and then I always talk about the net taxes, which is after the, the credits, so. That's what we just did.
Okay, yeah. Any questions on this? Okay, then we'll go to, thanks Lisa. Item F, discussion of beaver activity at Butter Factory Creek. Jeff?
Yeah, we've been receiving a few, um, complaints, as well as we've been handling an issue right behind, um, the old P L H buildings of Pizza Hut and everything. We had pulled out, and we, we verified this with D N R before, before this, but, eh, had to pull out a small beaver dam in that area, it was causing it to back up, and, um, kind of through headquarters area, and then up into Wolf Creek or Wolf Street. And we'd taken it out, kind of, the first measure is usually, well, see if you can annoy them enough to move somewhere else. Um, all it did was give them resolve to rebuild a couple times, and then, eh, most recently, there was some very increased activity behind the American Family Insurance Building, and then the most notable one is the, is the very large tree you have the picture of, eh, which is at the One Wolf South or something like that, the street of apartments, eh, probably about a twenty-four inch diameter, um, tree over there.
Was it at least in ash?
I don't believe so.
I don't think it was.
I don't believe, unfortunately.
It's interesting.
Yeah, think about that, if we could train beavers to just, just take down ash trees, we could let them roam the village. Eh, but no, that, unfortunately, it's not the case. So, eh, we did make the decision that, that we had to, eh, based off of the fact that they were rebuilding in several locations. Eh, we consulted with a local individual who is a trapper, and to have them come in and, and trap these, eh, animals. Eh, we were successful last week with two, eh, one very, very large animal and one, eh, normal-sized animal, and, um, what we've discussed with them is that's, um, the removal of the, the animal, and if the traps are not live traps, I've been asked that on, on numerous occasions, we're not trying to be, um, shy with that, I guess. Eh, but since we did have traps in the creek and in the area, I did go around and deliver a memorandum to all the businesses along that area to make sure that they had people, kept people and animals out of there. And then since it does border a park, and I cannot for life of me remember the name of that park, off of-
Southbury Parkway.
Yeah. Eh, is it, yes, off of Southbury Parkway, yeah.
I'm blanking, too.
Yeah. Um, so knowing that there was a park over there and people that take animals, I went over there and I posted signs over there, allowing, notifying people of what we were doing. Um, I've not heard from the, the trapper since last week, to see if we've been successful in any others, but, eh, um, it's kind of the, it's, it's not uncommon to be dealing with animals in an urban environment.
Yeah. It's kind of interesting. We drove by there today, we, we saw the signs, and they're quite a neat animal, that they just peck away.
They're, they're fascinating to study until they're in your yard.
You're right.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the difficulty is obviously, the, the fear that if someone said, what do they do? Well, you know, the Butter Factory Creek is an important flood, carrying, eh, conveyance for us at the village, and, um, if we start allowing that to build up on there, and then all of a sudden, homes and, and businesses start flooding, and, you know, then, then it becomes a much bigger issue. So, it's not that we don't like the animals.
Right. Thanks for that update, Jeff, so we're now going to answer when people ask us questions about that. Any questions for Jeff? Okay, we'll go to item G, discussion of manhole lining work on South Main Street?
Right, that was, that was an approved, um, expense, and, eh, when we had gotten in to do our, our work on Elm and South Main, there were a couple manholes that we had listed as needing some, eh, repair work. Actually, as part of the, the roadway project, eh, the man, the contractor replaced some of the bad portions of those, which were the upper rings and the, eh, eh, frames, and castings and everything, and so, eh, when it came time to schedule the liner person to come in and take care of it, eh, kind of the response I was getting from our public works guys is, they don't need to be lined. And so I, I looked at them, I agreed with them, we looked at possibly doing a lining project on a different part of the village, maybe on two other manholes, because we really want to try this product out. And, eh, we just, it was one of those things, it was kind of spiraling out of control, we decided to step back. We didn't have to spend the money, didn't make sense to spend the money right then, and so we're gonna, we'll come back at a later date, but I pulled the plug on lining those two on South Main.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Item H, discussion vandalism of Oregon Rotary Bike Trail signs Thanksgiving weekend?
Someone shot the signs out there. Um, there were a couple, a couple of the hill signs, the, the warning, hill warning signs, um, there were a couple bullet holes, eh, from rifle, and then there were, there were a couple spots where someone shot them with, eh, obviously shotgun, lots of a, a pattern, and, and it bubbles out the paint on the backside. Um, we, eh, it's frustrating, anytime anyone damages something like that. Um, I don't, I know there's people probably frustrated that there's a trail through their hunting areas and everything that they've had, but, eh, um, we, eh, have notified, eh, the people or the, the authorities about it, and so if there's anything news we get on it, we'll, we'll, we will pursue damages, eh, against, eh, anyone who does something like that. We don't have a plan right now to replace them, they're not bad, but we'll continue to monitor it and see if there needs to be addressed over time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So I'm a big fan of getting that kind of thing replaced right away. Um, there's a, there's a study done called, eh, Window Pain Study that New York did at the New York subway, and you can read about it if you want, but the gist of it is, when you let little things like that go, they become bigger things, and then bigger things start to spread, and ultimately, at some point, you have to do something about it, so.
I, I agree, I just, especially going into the fall, where, where the path's not going to have a lot of use, I thought we, we pulled off for now. I mean, I will continue to look at it. I haven't had a chance to go out, I just, I, I received photos from, eh, it was actually Steve Arnold from, eh, Mayor of Pittsburgh, um, that was out there walking and sent me the pictures over Thanksgiving break, but I agree with you, Jeff, I, I like to see things kind of put back, but I also, you know, I'd, I'd almost be tempted if they're, if they're kind of keep getting shot up or something like that, we just take them down, and they don't have anything to shoot at.
We put up trail cameras.